Buckeye Valley Board of Education's special meeting for the Middle School Edition project. Can I get a roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Pembroke here, Michelle Aboney?
Here.
Mr. Tiki?
Here.
Mr. Troy, switch up, right?
Here.
If you are able, would you please rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll move that the Buckeye Valley Board of Education approved the agenda as presented. Can I get a second, please?
One second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mrs. Pembroke?
Yes.
Michelle Aboney?
Yes.
Mr. Tiki?
Yes.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Very good. Mr. Reader, you are up, sir.
All right, great, thank you. Well, first of all, thank you very much for allowing me to present tonight. Sorry I have to be on the mic. I usually wouldn't be in the classroom, that'd be great, but I do want to be able to be heard, especially for the people that are watching our board meeting tonight. So, thank you again. First of all, we are going to talk about the BBL learning campus, our plans. We want to go through that, especially focused on our middle school addition. But also, I do want to go through some thoughts on the future and where we're going. I do want everybody that has to know, we want feedback, so I have put post-its in front of you. I am definitely interested in your concerns, your ideas. And a parking lot means anything else that you'd like to throw at me would be great. If you have questions, issues, whatever, put it up there, that'd be great. But also, feel free to any time, send me an email on what's going on, how we can make it a better experience for you. But I think, to start, I want the board to know, you know, we've been out, if you didn't know, to all the buildings this week. We went to every single building, talked to every single teaching staff on what's going on, what's going on with plans here and where we're going in the future. So, again, we are out there trying to garner feedback. We want the community to do the same thing, that's very big to us. We want to be transparent. We want to be open, we want to hear your feedback. I appreciate the good, bad, and ugly. Yes, I do like movies, and most of you, that's way before your time, I apologize for that. But the key is, is that I think your feedback is very important to us as we go forward. That's the only way we can get better. So if you have concerns, I'd rather know those, we're not trying to hide from those. But also, at the end of the day, we have a vision and direction that we want to go. But we need your help to make it happen. And lastly, what it's about is kids, every day, like every day, every kid. Our kids are our most important thing. You know, I have two of my own, I know the teaching staff, how much they appreciate the teachers every day, they see them as superheroes, they see the bus drivers as superheroes. Coaches, aides, lunch lady, it doesn't matter. Every staff, every student, every staff plays a big part in this. They're a big stakeholder group, and we've got to take care of that, too. As we go forward, it's on me, so first, I want to thank the board again for tonight, allowing us, allowing me to present to you and go through this in the community. I think it's very important. I want to thank our leadership team, Dr. Strangus, you can say, where is he? He is at a national conference presenting about the great things that are happening at BV. We're thrilled with that. He wished he could be here, but you get me, I'm sorry, maybe it'll be shorter because he likes to talk a long time. No, I'm just kidding, I'm in trouble already, so there we go, but we will go forward with this. But I also want to thank the staff, and I mentioned that, for taking the time and letting me come to their buildings this week to go over this plan and listening. And we're listening to them also. I have a few people here tonight, Shor is our architect. They did have a death in the family, I wanted the board to know, so they could not meet tonight, so you get me. I'm trying to do the best I can, I'm so artistic, so be ready. We have Ann Frost here, she's our building rep, I just wanted you to know. And then we have Andy Rogers Summit Construction here also, so they're going to make it happen for us, just so you know if you have questions. You know, the middle school, we've kind of been behind closed doors probably for a little bit. And you haven't heard a lot about the addition and what we're doing. And I also want the board to know why. You know, when I first started, I've sat in meetings on where we are going with the addition, what's our thoughts? But what it came down to is a few things, and I'm not going to reiterate the past or the future, let's just talk about the precious present and as we move forward. The key is, we need guiding principles to determine how we're going to make decisions, and not saying we haven't, we have. But the idea is, what are our guiding principles as we move forward to be able to decide on big decisions? So our number one that's up there is safety and security for all stakeholders. That's an important thing for everybody to understand. Anything we do, we have to be safe and secure for our students, our staff, and our community at all times. So we're going to do whatever it takes. The board, thank you, you've done an outstanding job doing that, you've had that vision for a long time. We're doing that, we will continue to do that. That's something that's important, when we make a decision, we need to look at what's best for our students and what's going to happen for our staff to keep them safe at all times. Academic excellence is important. Sometimes teachers today have been very much pressed with a number of issues. They've had to be everything. Our focus is academics. And I think the key is, we have to work on being academic excellent, whatever we're doing. So whatever decision we make, in buildings, enrollment, looking at things, we've got to have good numbers for our teachers to make things happen, because the future is our children. We know that, we're charged with that. That doesn't mean just for the next three years, that means for the next 25. We need to set the stage for the next leaders to be able to be ready and say, hey, they have a good plan, they have a vision, they're ready to go. And I think this meets those. Opportunities for all learners is very personal. Every student should be involved, every kid, every day. Every kid should have an opportunity, I don't care if it's K through 12, whatever grade you are, we should offer opportunities. Facilities, clubs, groups, action items, whatever, whatever programming we look at, we should be thinking that. So when a board comes to us and say, Rex, is it opportunities for every student? Do you have that? Show it, prove it. Those are things that we want to hear. Is it safe and secure? Does it help us be academically strong? Are those things that are important? But opportunities are in the arts, the athletics, anything you ask for, it's sitting there. Those are important for our students, those things, you know, that's why they get up every day. Half the time, kids come to school because they want to be on that field that night. It means something to them, so we should honor that. And you know, I told the teachers today, I said, it's great to be academic, but let's have fun with kids. We can have fun with kids sometimes, you know, let's enjoy our kids, what age they're at, enjoy, be patient, enjoy them. I think it's important when we go into that opportunity. Fiscal responsibility is huge. And I'll talk about that, how the board, our treasurer, has done a great job on those things of being fiscal. They're making things happen, and the project you're seeing in front of you is because of the great service they give us. And finally, meet district enrollment needs, that's important. We are, I will say this, we are gaining students. And I think we'll be naive to think we are not. There's a bunch of things I will show you tonight, there are people that are coming. So we're going to have to prepare for that, and I'd rather be proactive than reactive. We need to be in advance on that. Three plans, three-phase plan for the future. Right now, you're seeing phase one. This is the middle school addition, and I'll explain that mainly tonight. Phase two and three I'll touch on, and then, because we have work to do. Obviously, I want you to know, we're going to bring you a lot of data and feedback as we go forward. But I want you to know, we'll touch on those tonight, some thoughts on what we need to do to move forward on those. But also, it's about phase one, the middle school addition. Phase two is the new high school construction. Phase three is the new elementary school construction. That's what it is, timing, those things will be based on certain things, which I'll share with you in a minute. So here's a picture of the new middle school facility, we do have pictures up here, just so you know, this slide deck, we will share with every single staff member, and I will share with any community member that wants it. We'll probably put it out there for you. Because again, we want to be transparent. Here's all the information, here's all the data, give us feedback, let us know where you're at, we want that. But that's a look at how it is, I'll go through these, but again, I'll give you those, just so we stay within time. Middle school addition details, here's a couple of details to start. The board did approve this project in 2025. I did want to give you, because you know I'm a data dude too, so here's what happens is, right now, in the middle school, the fifth grade in there, the number, I clicked the number for you just today. I told them at four o'clock, I want the numbers on that, so I can tell the board and the community where we're at. In the building right now, there's 735 students. The capacity can range, based on numbers, you can say, Rex, what is it? Well, it's based on numbers, it's 750 to 799. So your decision, I want to commend all of you to do this, is well warranted. Because we are now in range, we need a facility that's going to handle more students. By your great service, we've been able to do that. So it'll go up to possibly 1,100, but we are in range right now in that building, within a year or two, to be over capacity, as we're looking through it. The funds from this are available due to fiscal and conservative practices, spending from the Buckeye Valley schools. I told you, our treasurer did a great job going through those things, so that our board should be appreciative of all the expenses done. They need that, that's important, thank you for that. No bond levy is being collected for this middle school project, I think you should know that. And the money for this project is coming from reserve balances without impacting instructional and staffing needs. We're not going to do this and then just not be able to do anything, thanks to our great service, our treasurer, superintendent, and our board. So we are looking to continue our practices and move forward, and we'll do that as we go. Couple of details on the middle school addition. It's a two-story building, that's what we're looking for. I'm just going through these, and I can answer anything. Align with the existing middle school building. Double hallway entrance to the existing building, which is huge. We add 16 new learning spaces. You can say, Rex, is it classrooms, or the cookie cutter, or that not? We're trying not, we're going to be some flex spaces. We need to, the future looks different. Academics look different, we can't prep just for right now, we've got to prep for the future also. And here's the key, there's a lot out there, and I want the board to know, that a preschool is going to be centralized at Central Campus. That is not going to happen. So there will be no preschool at this building, that ends the discussion. We will keep our preschools in our elementaries where they belong. Kids do not want to be on a bus for an hour plus to be traveling. I have, I've had a four-year-old, and I feel bad for the bus driver, that long, to be able to sit that long with that. So as we go forward, we are not going to bring a preschool there. I am telling the board I will give data and bring it to you about a preschool and how we should do it. I do want you to know, there's a lot of students that want to get into our school in preschool. We have to turn a lot of people away. So we need to think about that, too, so I'll put the eye on that at some point and work through that with a preschool plan also. Playing preschool is very important, even though we do not have to do that, we can just focus on K. But we know, we need to do that for our students and our community to help them grow as educators for. Okay, so that takes care of that. We've got another picture here, middle school, again, I'll share all this with any of you. That's a nice picture, it looks beautiful. Here's a couple more addition. The new gym will be 84 feet, I do want you to know, in the first plans, it was 60. We have moved it to 84, because we need more spaces for our athletic teams and other things. We need those spaces out there. So the key is, is that we want a full-size gym, that'll be all-purpose. Now, I want you to know, a varsity gym, because you're talking to an old coach, is 94 feet. But 84 is more than fine for a middle school. We will have suddenly two gyms to be able to do a lot of different activities, not only for our kids, but for our younger kids in the community. And we're building capacity for all students to have opportunities. Because right now, we're keeping kids until nine, 10 o'clock at night. We don't want to do that, we need to end that. So that's going to stop, so we're going to continue to work through that. Here's the biggest thing, I walked the loop the first day out front. And the bus loop at the middle school is chaos, it's not fun. Let's just, you know I'm going to talk straight, okay, it's a cluster, it's not good. So we had to end it. So mainly, I want the board to know, that we looked at that loop, and we decided we had to change this plan now. Because I do not want any of your kids, number one thing, safety, security of all students, I do not want your kids to walk through three tiers of traffic. We're one step away, we are, the board, thank you, we're going to be proactive. We're going to stop it, we have a plan. So now, we have put a loop behind the middle school to be able to take all buses. So you won't have cars and buses collide together, we're not going to do that. You know, we're going to add more students, the students are coming, that means more cars and more everything. So, I get that's going to take a little bit of time, we're working through solving that now. But I also want you to know, it is solved in the future, 27, 28, the bus loop will be done. We'll send buses behind, and that'll be a great thing for our students, and it begins that safety fact that we've told you that we need business. We're still on it now, so I'm not done with it right now, but I'm also saying it is solved in the future with this plan.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, you can.
The new full-size gym, is it an additional gym or a replacement?
It's an additional gym, so we will have two gyms, good question, we'll have two gyms in the middle school. If you think of that, we'll have two gyms in the high school right now. So we have four on campus, as we grow, we'll look at something else here in a little while, see what we're going to do about that, but I think that's our goal. Yes, two new gyms, and one new gym, so we'll have two on site. There are two restrooms that give you access from the outside, if you see that from the building. We had a number of people ask, we had baseball, tennis out there, people want a nice restroom. So we are going to be able to access two restrooms by the building. But I also want you to know, the playground area, it's going to be nice for students to not have to go back in the building, they'd be right there to be able to go to the bathroom, too. So it's nice to have those things, too, so we will have two restrooms there also. There's another picture of the building. You see the entrances, the bus loop. Middle school additional details, here's some more. In the building, we will create an outdoor learning space, so you're more than welcome to look at the plans, if you need me to show, there's an outdoor learning space between the two corridors. It's very important for our kids, as I talk to the elementary teachers, I want the board to be able to know, they want to take their kids outside some. And how about even for a walk sometimes? You know, students, how about, it's nice to take a walk, sometimes you need a break or go to an outside space. This is going to have an outdoor space. I can't tell you what it's going to be, because we're going to take feedback, which you guys have trained me well, listen to people, and then we'll come out with what that's going to look like. But we want it to be a nice outdoor space for outdoor learning opportunities for our kids, which I think will be great. There is an elevator in the new addition, so that is done, so I made sure that happened. And then we've got additional staff parking. Parking, I do want the community and board to know, we are working through that plan on what the back looks like. You're seeing some things now, I'll come to you if there's any changes and obviously get input. But I do want you to know, I want input from the teachers that potentially can be in that building, how that's going to look, and the principal, and get some ideas as we go forward. So those are important things as we do. But here's the biggest thing, I said updated playground and play area. You know, I was at some other schools, there are some really neat playgrounds, we've got to go out and see what's out there. But I also want to see what the students want. I thought the last one, we built a weight room type area, we need to know what students want to do. And it's based on what level is going to be there, and I think that's coming. Here's the last thing, board, that's out there, I do want you to know, board members, a lot of people think the fourth grade is coming to that building. I will also tell you at this point, the building, the fourth grade will not be coming to this building until phase two is complete. Because I'll tell you what the building will be once phase two is complete. We do not say, why? So if I got a question, why, I would tell you, let's go through safety, security. Having five grade levels in the same building, I don't want my fourth grader with eighth graders, okay? Not going to do it, I can't give you a recommendation for that. So I want you to know, that's very important to us, that we think, right now, we're pushing at 5'8", I will tell you that, that's my honest opinion. So we'll be able to get through that, but we're not going to do it for space. Number two comes into play, academic excellence is very important. That's not a good academic sound place to do that. Four through eight, that's not a great grade band. So we need to think through that educationally on those things. You have somebody, my background has been a sub, a teacher, a coach, assistant principal, principal, so I've done all the jobs. And I know the academics, and I know the ops. So the key is, we need to get those in a grade band that's going to help our students be very successful. And I'll tell you what that's going to be in a second. So again, quote, so it's out there, the fourth grade will not come to that building until phase two is complete. So our elementaries, we have to have a look, and there are things that we can do to be best practices, because again, we want BV to be the best for all students and staff members, and that's where we're going to be at. So that's where that is.
Can you clarify what phase two is?
Yep, I'm going to tell you phase two, I'll go right through it. Good question. Middle school addition here, another look at it, looks beautiful, some good things to be able to do, I think our kids will be excited. Here's some designs, again, when I share it, you all have it, so you can take a look. I do have bigger pictures here, I need glasses big time for these, I know that. But they are there, so you have an idea of what those look like. Really respect what an engineer does, and you're welcome to read those as we're going forward. So there's some ins or designs I want you to see. Again, you see the two entrances, that's a big thing for the building also in the back, because students will be entering there. With this right now, before I get to phase two and three, is, right now, in that building, we will add 16, and we will be at 47 classrooms in there, potentially. So I do want you to think, and I want the board to know, there's thought in how we're playing this game to grow this out. Because we can't just go to voters constantly to ask and fix problems, because we're too scared. Fix it all at once, fix it. What do you need to fix, what are we going to look for? And I'll tell you that in a second. But potentially, the capacity of that building goes up to 1,175, real quick. And you're going to tell me, let me get through phase two and three, and I'll answer why that number's important in a minute. But that gives us some more capacity, but again, I do want the community and the board to know and say, thank you. Right now, in that building, you have 735 students. Right now, the capacity is anywhere based on numbers, I can say 26, 25. I will tell you, academically, and I will quote me, elementary, 20 to 22 is the best academic numbers in this classroom. Going to 25, I tried to teach elementary, doing that, that is a very hard thing to do. Ask the experts. So we want the best for our kids, we need to act like it, our charge is always to get back to those. So that's a number. Summit construction, just so you know, will break ground in March, that's our goal, March of 2026. That's where we're going to roll. In addition, we'll be ready for the first day of school for the 27, 28 school year. So with what we've tried to do, we have built, usually construction, and Andy could probably tell us more, it's probably taken two to three years on those construction. You're seeing us hit it from about a year and a half, you guys are good.
Thanks.
Don't let it go to your head, okay? But I think the key is, that's pretty good for us to be ready for the 27, 28 year. And we need to be, because I told you, our numbers are tight, so we need to do this. So thank you again for doing this. So future planning, here's phase two and three, and this is important. And there's a lot to this, so let me go through it, and there's no assumptions here. Because we need feedback, we need feedback in a lot of groups. This isn't just one person, two people telling you what we're doing. We need a team, we need to be all one, we're one community, let's act like it, because we need your help right now. Phase two means construction of new high school. I know that we tried two years ago, but what was the vision? What was the direction? Where were we trying to go? The vision now is in front of you. And we're meaning to it, because we're going to look hard at certain things. So right now, I'm going to ask the board, what I'd like to do is reconvene the facilities committee, quickly, in January, to begin the process of gaining data for the board. I need them to look through enrollment numbers, I need more staff to look through things, I need more feedback, I need community feedback. Because I want to come to the board with Rick and say, hey, here is our direction, here's our recommendation. We'll give you options, but I feel as leaders, we owe you, and I mean it, a recommendation. This is what we think we'll do, and if they don't like it, that's fine, we'll go back to the drawing board. But we have to come to you with a plan of action of how to make that happen. So with that, we're going to meet with every stakeholder group, I don't care. I've met with four buildings, it was the greatest tour I probably had, I call it the Zerk Tour, Rex backwards, but we are on tour. And we saw every single teacher been able to at least know what was going on. And I know that was important, it was important for us to get out there and begin that process. But we want to meet with the students, I want students involved. I don't think they've had enough, this is theirs, they're the future. We need to meet with faculty, athletics, arts, and transportation. We need a vision on all of those areas, to be the best. We want to compete, we're down in Steubenville, we want to beat them in football, and we're in the state finals, we had a great, we won great in golf, we've been everywhere. But our teams deserve the best opportunities. Baseball team, where are you going to take? So we're ready to go, but we're excited. So let's be focused on those things, but all groups need to have feedback. And they need to be heard, and they need to give us their thoughts. We're going to analyze enrollment data, so you can come out with your data, I have data, but I'm going to come at you with data. All our decisions, I want you to know, are going to be based on data. It's not going to be based on, hey, this is our opinion, we need to go. You need to look at data, and that's important, and I'll talk about that as we go. We'll monitor closely some new housing developments. I want you to know, right now, Hollybrook is on the west side by Dublin Road. They have 140 units, single-family units going on, excuse me. Seventy of them are being built this spring. So usually, on a single unit, it's about one, 1.2, 1.8, depending on how you want to swing, how many students. So it's coming. Hollybrook is sitting down on the west side. We do have heard, most of you heard, Vixby Parkway, North Woods, that's a big one coming. When does that start? We heard it could be five years, it could be less. I'm seeing little things as you drive down, certain areas of East Side building, and I see some bigger houses being built. So we can't be naive that people aren't coming to a great five-star district. Our staff, our board, our administrators deserve credit for getting us there. But I'm also telling you, people are coming here, if they can. And then here's one, Fisher Farms is over here, but one-third of that is in BV District. So the developer is very much after right now, putting an interceptor, we heard, that would allow sewer and water. If they get close to us with sewer and water, you know what's going to happen. And I think that means more people are coming, the builders will be able to get in there. So we've got to prepare for those as we move forward. The above actions will begin in January, more actions will be needed, and here's the key. We will come to the board, and I want the board to know this, if you're good with this, I will come to you when our numbers are close to capacity in those elementaries. So right now, we are looking hard at east and west, so the decision to build and ask for a build to the community on our new high school will be based on our elementary numbers. We'll say, well, why would you build an elementary school? Because guess what, all those numbers are coming here. And I just told you, 735 are in that building right now. So the key is, capacity in this building is 800, based on numbers. So we're getting tighter. So you don't think we're going to get more students, and we just had five move in today, all three buildings, or four of the buildings, so three buildings. So the key is, numbers are coming. So I think we're getting tighter as we look at that. But I do want you to know, with this, to the board, here's the idea, I told you a number, 1,175 in middle school. What we're looking for is, as I show you this, this is important, is, we're looking at a grade band change. And here's why. And I want the community to know, and again, I'll share this with you, we're open, transparent, I'm an open book. So what's going to happen here is, is that we are looking at numbers of where we're going to go with the district. And here's the plan out. So we're talking, and we talked to the elementaries, that when the high school is built, when it's built, we will look to reconvene, and we need to. So this, the fourth grade, would then move to the middle school and create an intermediate school, four through six. Now let me talk to you academically about that. PK three are elementaries, that is a great, great band, academically. Because four through six, here's what happens, four through six, when you have fourth graders and sixth, I really don't want my fourth grader, I said earlier, with an eighth grader. So right now, the fourth grade, there's a number of things that fourth graders can do, maybe higher math, different things with five, we can't get them here right now, because they're so far away. If they're on campus, we'd be able to utilize that. But a four, six grade band is very strong, a lot of the top districts, I live in one, I should live here, I know. But I've been at Graham before a long time, but they're a four, six, one of the tops for the state. But you see these intermediates sitting there. In the seven, eighth building, you can say, Rex, why would you not move the sixth graders with them? Because here's the reason, the sixth grade is kind of an odd, I taught sixth grade. So if you've ever had a sixth grader, the seventh and eighth graders get to do middle school athletics, and the sixth graders kind of are just outside sitting there. So now, they kind of have their own purpose with four, six, and guess what? This building would be the seven, eighth, this high school. And if you're thinking, if your math, they look like our treasurer, it'd be 400 a class, in that range, we're estimating. We've built the school out for the next 10 years, and we don't have to come to our voters anymore for a while. Because we know growth's going to happen. But our goal would be a seven, eighth building here, and then the high school would be nine through 12, with a centralized learning campus. And there's a lot of benefits to having a centralized learning campus. If the school is a four, six, this is a seven, eighth, and you have nine, 12, a lot of our kids can move based on ability to take classes there in walking distance. We can't do that right now, it gives us a lot of flexibility. The fourth grade, sixth grade can take a higher-level math class at the seven, eighth building. And guess what, our seven, eighth grade can easily walk and take high school classes. Right now, if you didn't know that, some of our fourth graders have to take classes, they have a teacher that teaches higher-level math, but we have to pull somebody to do that. So we need to think through that as we're going, but the grade bands are sitting there. I did talk to Wes today, and the fourth grade teachers thought it was great that we would have a four, six type intermediate, they're fine with that, because they understand the strategy academically, because that goes to one of our four guiding principles. Guys, you just don't move students and people without having a plan and talk through it, but also understand the educational value. But a four, six intermediate puts us very much in range. Be nice to have buses with four through sixth graders, yes, I'll figure that out. And we'll have seven, eighth, and we'll have high school. And then our satellites will be our elementaries as we're going forward. So right now, we do have one on probably the south, what would it be, southwest side with west, and then northeast with east. So we'll look at that. But to trigger that is our elementary numbers, and they're getting closer, which I will show you, and I'll bring more data, it doesn't have to be nine, I have some if you want it. But they are getting closer to when we need to take that. The key in phase two is, it takes three years to go to high school. Wow, three years. And we'll need feedback from the community on what happened the last one, but here's the deal with the high school. The high school experience, I want the board to know, is changing. We don't need butts in seats all the time, excuse me, we don't. They are moving. Right now, the board needs to know, you've asked, some of you asked me, we have two hundred students that are not in the building at sometimes. So as you're thinking in the past, if we had a twelve to sixteen hundred high school, Rex, you're thinking four hundred a class, you need to build a sixteen hundred high school. My challenge is, I'll go through the data, I don't think we have to. We need to think differently. Now, we will build something that can be expanded, but I don't think we need sixteen hundred, because we're not going to have that many at once. There's going to be a lot of people that come and go. I think the future's online learning too, we know that. We've got to get into this mode, and we can go academic, I can talk about that all night if you want, but I think the key is, we'll be on par for those things. But the education at that experience is going to change. And I do want you to know, right now, the high school career and learning is huge right now, and we are a little bit obsolete within the building. I mean, I have high school teachers, they know that, it's not their fault, it's just we don't have the option. We need labs in the future, in our buildings, that kids can take it. But I want to know, the community know the vision, and I hope the board's good with it, is we want a learning campus for all stakeholders. I think our buildings need to be open for adults at night, I think we should have learning labs open if an adult wants, a community member wants to come in and take a class and be into cybersecurity or something, prove themselves. It needs to be an educational experience. We really hash out being lifelong learners, but what do we do about it? We talk, what's the action? So I think those are important things as we go forward, that our building should be, we're going to look at partnerships to try to bring them in. Why wouldn't we have a college part of us? Why wouldn't we have a library part of us? Why wouldn't we have different things to be able to help offset some expenses for our community members? So we're going to do whatever it takes to make it happen. But I'm also telling the board, I don't see it going that far, but that's your choice, and you know we'll give a recommendation. But here is your things, but I also, the last one, again, the preschool will stay in its current elementaries. We are not going to centralize preschool, but I want you to know that. So that's a grade band. Phase three, as I'm going through, and I can talk about any of these more, phase three is the future of an elementary. So our numbers are getting tighter, but when the high school is built, the fourth grade is out, we should leverage those numbers, but we'll be watching those closely on when we'll need an elementary school, because we're going to get there. I don't know when, I can't tell you, I don't have the magic wand, but we'll take a look, and we'll try to give those numbers to you. And I do want to know the board, we have a twenty-three, you did an enrollment study for twenty-three. I've looked through it, I have all those numbers. I also want you to know, I think we can look through the numbers and give you a good estimation of what we're going around spending a lot of money to do that, and I want the community to know that, because we'll share those numbers and make sure you know what they are. But we can estimate, but we know there's going to be people coming, and why wouldn't we prep ahead? But this will be the thing, continue to analyze enrollment data in elementary buildings, that would be PK three, to make sure we know those numbers. That'll trigger, again, data triggers this, it's not anything else. The first thing you say, well Rex, what if it doesn't happen? What if we do? Well, we're going to run out of space, and we're going to have to figure things out, but it doesn't mean I'm going to bring the fourth grade into a building to be unsafe to solve that. We'll solve it some other way, I'm just shooting it straight. So that's what it is, we'll have to figure those things out. Monitor closely all new housing, we're on that, there's more developments coming. Reconvene the facilities committee again, meet with stakeholders, same thing, board action will be needed, enrollment's close to capacity. Again, it'll take two to three years to build that out. That's phase three. Couple things with phase two and three, increasing building capacity all levels to accommodate four hundred students. So I want the community and the board to know, there's a plan here to get us at a number that we think we can grow out and not come to our voters every other year for people. We need to be planning that out. So we're looking at that class size, we'll have space, you'll say, well Rex, the middle school, or the intermediate's going to have a lot of room, well, good, ask the teachers, we need room. I'd rather have room than sitting there, and then let people, let us grow into it. Some of the bigger districts have done that, smart way, they've let people grow in. It's not just, hey, we keep begging you for money when we react, so we're not going to react. Additional elementary building accommodate the growing, that's what it is. And then I want the board to know, our goal is to keep the bus garage somewhere centrally located on this campus. That's the key, because moving it somewhere else means more miles. You don't realize our buses are driving more miles than any school district in the state. We're driving a lot of miles, that's just what we do. And what a great job bus drivers do, they keep our kids safe every day. That's fantastic, as we go. I wanted this key takeaways, we are experiencing sustained growth, you're seeing it, it's coming. We're not at a temporary spike, I think it's going to be consistent. Construction of new high school, again, takes three years, just key points, grade four, I want that out in the community, grade four, will not move to the learning campus until a new high school is constructed. We're not doing it. Can't, not doing it, that's our goal. That's what we want to see. Preschool remaining in elementaries, construction of new elementary will take two to three years as we're moving. Here's some overall trends, you can see the numbers, based on, we've got this from your enrollment figures, we've just begun to analyze these, but I'm also telling you, there is growth, by twenty-nine, thirty, our numbers are rising in the district, and it could rise more. So the key is, where are we at with those numbers? I can give you numbers, anybody who sends it to me, I'll give you where we're at, because we want to be transparent. But we are gaining numbers. I did tell you, the biggest building in the district right now, sitting at seven thirty-five and close to capacity, or in range. That's why the addition was such a smart move by the board and everybody else to make that happen. That's two hundred, you can see that, I'll give you those numbers, that gave about two hundred and forty-four students over five years, I think that's on a conservative thought. I mean, we'll see what happens as we get bigger in these big ones. Remember, the study was not really done knowing these three developments coming in also. So that's our thing. You can look through those, those are key enrollment numbers as we go. Lastly, I want you to know this, in the board, we're here to take feedback at all times. We want that, I need your feedback tonight, if the people online want to send us the feedback, we're also going to have a Google document out there that people can send stuff. I do want to hear what's not good about it, concerns, so we can fix it. What's your thoughts? You know, I think there's interest groups that want things to happen, we have a plan for you. It's just sometimes we have to get groups together, we want to meet with athletics, we want to meet with arts, we want to do that, that's not what this meeting is about, it's more about the middle school addition. But I also felt tonight, board, that it was important that you know where we're going, because I can't just talk about this and not talk about anything else. I think you have to have some ideas, and the community know where we're trying to go. But it's very important us to get your ideas, your parking lot, we want to be in front, we want to be collaborative, and we want to make good decisions, not only for our kids, our staff, but also our community. So lastly, Bill Behrens, thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions you guys have.
I've got, I've got one for you, Rex. So, and I love that we've got the new bathrooms that have exterior access, and that's something we've been asking for for a few years for tennis and baseball, but just, you're talking about safety, so are those accessible inside and out? I'm assuming, like, we would have those locked down during the day, right during school hours, so they're not accessible from the outside?
Yep, yep. I think we will come through that plan, our goal is, I was talking to somebody else earlier, we'll take a look at the restrooms, what we're thinking. I think there's a certain timeframe they would be done, I think cleanliness is big too, I would see our custodians were cleaning the locker at night. I mean, I could see that a teacher on recess could have a key and open them if we needed to, but we won't keep them open. I don't want people in there during, I don't want people on campus during school hours, off school hours, I think they'll be open, and then we'll shut them down when second shift's done. Good question.
All right, I got a few, I'll keep going, then you guys jump in. Playground location, so is that set that it will be on the back? I know we talked about maybe doing some things out front.
We did, I think we'll look out front, but here's, I want to get more feedback for the board. I'd like to conclude the teachers in that, I'd like to conclude the students in that, and then bring you some ideas. I mean, some of my ideas, just so you know, we have that big grass open area, if you have a fourth, fifth, or sixth grader, guess what I do? They want to run, play football, kick ball, run around, they want fields. So I think we need an area they can go to that's big, plus they want to play Gaga ball, and they want to do a few other things. So we know that, but we have an idea of four, six, what they would like to do, but also I think there's, we do have fifth graders in the building now that will enjoy those things until that time. So we want to have some context, probably a little more context with the teachers, and then to give them some ownership. Parking's not set either, because I think we need to have a bigger plan, even with athletics and some of those things, what we're going to do with those areas as we move forward, those will be discussions, but we're going to engage those groups and talk through, because it's not just what, you know, I think or anybody else, I really want people to buy in and feel it's there, so that's important. So to answer you, I think really, we want some more feedback, and I'll bring it to you. I like something in front too, but vision, what are we going to do with those areas on a high school? I mean, we haven't decided any of those out front, what we're going to do either. So a few more discussions probably need to happen, then we'll come to you.
Okay. And then another one I had, so with the new, with the new addition, will there be a second kitchen put in there, is that still the plan?
So there is no second kitchen, we took that out, the building, we went through, we met with the middle school staff, we met with everybody else, they felt we have enough cafeteria room in that, when we go to that building to handle what we're doing now. So we didn't want, at the beginning, the first idea was to have two separate buildings, that's why it was going to be a four, five potential, and then you have six, seven, eight, all in the same location. So now, we are not going to do that, which we save funds on that, and I can give you that package too, if you want that anytime, but right now, we've taken those things out to simplify it, because it's one building, we're thinking that. So we already have a good kitchen, we do the middle school, I do want the community to know, we will take a look at upgrades, obviously, in the middle school. We have some things, it is thirty years old, so we have some things to work on, there's nothing wrong with being thirty years old, I wish I was that again, but it is something that we have some things we need to work on throughout there, and I think that's important to us, and it's important to our staff also. Same thing with the seven, eighth grade, potentially moving here, we would look at this as a beautiful place, but we have some things we would probably need to work on.
Do you have any idea what some of those upgrades would look like?
I think, I think right now, I will tell you honestly to the board, we need new desks and chairs right now, we need more paint in there, we need to look at the lockers, what we're going to do, what's the upgrade in those things? We have a bunch of neat areas in the middle school, I will take anybody to walk with us. But I, again, would probably like to go to the middle school and the intermediate staffs to get their opinion on, walk with me and get some thoughts, especially the academic team, where we want to take those spots. But we do need some upgrades in those areas right now, we have some things probably from the nineteen nineties, eighties, nothing wrong with that decade, I love that decade, but we've got some work to do on those, to answer you. Good question.
From the classroom standpoint, so I like you to talk about you having more flexible learning spaces. So just kind of to give folks a visual, like comparably, how would the new classrooms or learning spaces look comparatively?
So we have, we do have one, if you look at the plans up there, we have created a room that has a wall, that can be a removable wall, which we would like to have expansion type rooms, we didn't want just cookie cutter rooms, we wanted those opportunities. But we do have learning spaces, so you know to do that. We can do, I think it's more about, we have a space to answer you, but then it's what we're going to do within that space. So we need to talk about the type of desks we want, I don't think it's just the normal desk you've seen in the past where it takes the whole classroom. We should have ones that move, and you can put in the tables. There's a lot of different learning models out there, especially in the differentiated world of education, where you have, you have kids at the low end, you have people in the middle and the high end, and that means nothing against them, it's just we're all that, I have plenty of skills that I need a lot of practice in. But the idea is teaching, you need to be able to have those teaching stations to do that. So most of the classrooms, the answer here, are a certain size, I think we want that, but what's going to happen, we need to reconvene in there, how that's going to look, we do have a couple smaller rooms in there too, with potential to do some things. So as we go through that with the academic team and the teachers, we'd like to see what they want to do with those areas, but right now, given the sixteen potential learning spaces, one could be a lot bigger to do a lot of different things, a couple smaller, a couple regular classrooms, because we need to, we need to have that as we go forward.
I get it will be impossible to not interrupt our students while this project's going on. I know one hallway, one, one attachment point lines directly up with the hallway, the other one does not. What are we going to do to minimize the distraction to our students?
Obviously, that's number one, and Summit knows that, we want to do that. A lot of this work that we probably need to be close, we're going to do early in summer to get a lot of that done. That's our goal, and I will give a checkout plan. I do want you to know that loop will be done last, because we have to, because next year I have to have school, but we'll try to come up with something for you, but that's the last part. We're going to do that once the kids are out, that next year, and we'll fix that and be done with the project. But I will tell you, most of the project that we, we're worried about noise, we're going to try to get that done. So we started in March, but obviously, in the summertime will probably be our hammer time. But I'll give the board updates on that. I want you to know in this, we're very glad we worked with the middle school team and come up with a plan of that, because we don't want to disrupt academics at any time, that's our goal.
I think that anybody who was at East Elementary two thousand seventeen, eighteen, while the, while the addition, and the new building was being built, while the old building was still there, could definitely talk to that type of interruption and give us feedback.
I do, I do want the board to know, and the community to know, when we're talking